All right, good evening, everybody, to the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three Board of Education Meeting, open work session. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's myself there. Okay, we met in closed session?
Yes, so pursuant to the general provisions article three dash three zero five and three dash one zero four, the Board of Education of Queen Anne's County met in a closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, and any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals.
All right, thank you. Has everybody had a chance to look at the agenda for tonight? Can I get a motion for approval?
Yes, I move that approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye, aye. Okay, first information item tonight, Agriculture Day presentation, Mr. Page.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Want you a bouquet of flowers? A little sign, that's about Ag Awareness. Put that down for now. All right, let's go. Yes.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, President Schifinelli, board members, Dr. Salins, executive team. For the record, my name is Michael Page. I'm a curriculum supervisor, and with me today I have Ms. Jenny Rhodes from the University of Maryland's Extension Office. She is the principal agent of agriculture and food systems, and we will be presenting to you in regards to our Ag Awareness Day that we have every year for our seventh graders.
All right, well, welcome, and thanks for coming out.
You're welcome, thanks for having us.
I also would like to thank Lee Bridgman for coming out also. I know she's didn't want to. I don't know, she's trying to hide, but she was an integral part of it. And also our FFA, just by chance, they they came tonight, which is awesome, but Ag Day couldn't happen without FFA, Mr. Stokes. So it's it's great to actually have them present also, so thank you all. So the purpose of this presentation is really to go, oh, let me recognize these ladies, too. So we also had Janelle McHenry from Thompson Ag Consulting, and she is a programs and PR director there. She has been with Jenny and I since the very beginning, and same thing with Jessica Clark from Horizon Farm Credit. And as you can see, a lot of the community is involved in this initiative, and it and it's really amazing how how they all come out and support. Jessica has also been there since the very beginning, too. So I want to publicly thank them for being a part of this. The purpose is to provide Queen Anne's County's board with an overview of the twenty twenty-three Agriculture Awareness Day experience that welcomed all of our seventh graders to the Four-H Park. And a little bit of background about this, when we came together to design this day, we really wanted to focus it around standards so that, one, the students left our buildings, they were going to an experience in which they were going to be enriched with not only the science standards, but also our environmental literacy standards in regards to agriculture. The educational stations throughout the day provided insight into numerous agricultural topics, and the stations embedded introductions to many careers. And so that was one of the big aspects of of some of our conversation in regards to this day was, we really wanted to show students that about the agricultural community, but also that the jobs that are associated with that agriculture are our agricultural community.
And that's kind of why we picked the seventh grade, because we felt like, you know, they were getting done middle school, getting ready to go to high school, and hopefully to help to for them to start thinking agriculture is not just about being a farmer, but there's lots of other things that are connected to it. So I'll talk a little bit about our day. We bring two of the middle schools the first day and the other two the second day, and Mr. Page helps to arrange the buses, and and that, I think, is one of the biggest jobs that we have, is getting all the all the students there. Once they get there, we put them, we, everybody's been to the Four-H Park, I assume, so we put them, have you been to the Four-H Park? Okay, just make sure, make sure everybody's been to the Kelly Fair.
I won't smile.
Yeah, that's right. Once we get there, we have, so we made lots of changes probably over since when we really started this, and we're getting feedback, and we get them on the the grandstands out there, right by the horse arena, and we do a technology demonstration of of a drone. And it really gets their attention, gets them focused, we talk about how we use drones in agriculture, and kind of give them a little talk of the day and how it's going to go. And certainly, our superintendent has been there also to to welcome, and we've had the Secretary of Agriculture, he didn't come this year, but he often comes, and we bring a lot of county commissioners in, representatives, we have federal representatives, and also state, so very important. We have four stations, those are our formal stations, so they will spend almost an hour, fifty minutes at each station. We have aquaculture, we call that underwater farming, certainly very important what we do here in Queen Anne's County. Aquaculture is very important to our industry, for the craving industry, the oyster industry, fishing. So they learn a little bit about that, you'll see a picture up there, they actually, we're gonna, in this picture, there's baskets of oyster shells, and they had to pick out oyster shells, and then they had to throw them out, like they were gonna throw them out into the river, and they had to harvest them. And then they had to figure out whether they were going to make money or or not. So it was a whole math, a math deal, and then to learn about what happens, oysters in beds, so we have wild beds, and then we have seeded beds, and this was new this year, we changed that station to be a little more interactive and worked very well. And then we have the seed to harvest, and you can see, we have the tractor and planer there, and we have the combine there also. We have, we had two farmers there that were helping to teach about the tractor and the planer and the technology. They get to get in the tractor, they get to see that's really, you know, what goes on, all the computers, there's more computers, I think, in a tractor than there are in most classrooms that I've been in. It's very interesting for the kids. And then this year new was, one of the students brought his combine. And so we had two of our FFA students teaching the seventh graders how a combine worked, and it was just, it's very refreshing, you know, when you see, while these two were in, I guess, tenth and eleventh grade, to teach seventh graders of how a combine works, very important. And then we go to the harvested table, and that was part of, the kids made flowers, and they learned, we were worried about, oh, we're not sure if they're gonna like that, but they learned the parts of the flower, with pollination, you know, bees, all that, you know, goes together. They really enjoyed that. And then food safety is also part of that station. And we had the FFA students, we had written a curriculum for them, and they came in, and they started reading the curriculum, and they circulated around five different stations to learn about about that. And then farm animals will seem to always be their favorite. I was actually teaching at Kenner Island High School today in Lacy Phelps's class, and teaching them about agriculture, and they had been to Ag Awareness Day, so I figured they were probably one of the first students that came, and you know what they remembered? The goats. They love, they love the little goats. So we have two barns full of animals, they can touch, pet, you know, ask questions, most of them are four H's and FFA students that bring their animals, so there are projects of theirs, and they talk to them. But first, they'll go in a pavilion, and they'll learn about what are all the parts of animals used for, you know, we eat them, but we also do lots of other things. When they learn that makeup is made, and then, you know, so we got a lot of that in in the essays that we asked asked them to write. And it's just, and new this year, we had virtual reality. We had gotten those goggles from the National Chicken Council, who I work with in DC, and I'd actually gone to New York City and showed this virtual reality, so they can see inside a chicken house, they can see a processing plant, and they can see a hatchery. And I didn't think the kids would like this, but as you can see, it was a hit. So we had a, we had a really good day, and the weather was good, too.
Absolutely. I think I got lost in the chicken house.
I think that's all.
All right, very good.
Oh, community involvement. You can see from these pictures, each day, we took a picture of all the students, the adults, just our community. So it's not only the agriculture community, but other people that just want to say, hey, I want to come out and and volunteer for the day. We have about sixty volunteers it takes every day to run this, it's, and it takes a lot. So now, we have FFA students, we have Four-H students that come out, of course, everybody that works for the University of Maryland, I asked them to come, we have people from the Western Shore, the Lower Shore, and then all of us. Did I miss anybody?
You missed the horse and the salmon.
Oh, yes, yeah, that's true, yeah. We got a horse in the picture this year. Yeah, so we're thinking about maybe incorporating that horse a little more next year, the students really did did love the horse, but we, and we had fifteen, about fifteen, right, Mr. Stokes?
Fifteen to twenty each day.
Fifteen to twenty, and they liked it so much, they came, most of them, a lot of them came back the next day. So thank you, Mr. Stokes, for letting them come back, we appreciate that very much. And then, then our sponsors, so we couldn't do this certainly without your help, the Board of Education help, and Michael's help. When we first started this, it started, I had an intern, and I told her she had a project she needed to, so this was her idea, and I'm like, oh, I'll never get past the Board of Education. And we went to Mr. Page, and he's like, absolutely, positively, so it's been a real success. So because of his support and your support, and certainly our whole community, we send out letters, we get letters of donation, we figured out, Lee was doing some work, and Lee, we had, what, thirty thousand dollars of in-kind? Thirty dollars of in-kind donations that it takes to run this this day. So we we are very appreciative certainly of all of our sponsors.
And I just wanted to highlight another connection that we have with the schools in terms of our essay contests, and each middle school will be, well, they went through an essay contest about why or how does agriculture affect the life every, my life every day, and will give a first place prize, a second place prize, a third place prize for each school, and then we have an overall winner, and hope to present those in the January-June board meeting. And so, you know, this this essay contest, again, is is really fun to read, the essays that come from our seventh graders, and, and, you know, you highlighted the makeup portion, but there are some other things that that really, you know, they, in some of their essays, they are really passionate about what what happened there, and and the experience that they have, and the positivity that came from it. It was just overall great to hear from them how they felt about the day.
And then, of course, I work for the University of Maryland Extension, and we have to measure impact, so all the things that we have to do, it's about impacts. Mr. Page works with me, he sends it out to all the teachers, and we have a pre and a post test, and this is just one of the questions that we ask, you know, what is their knowledge of farming or agriculture before and after? So you can see that we have went from twelve point six to forty percent of those of the students really knowing more about agriculture. And then each question, each station is able to ask one question, so we want to make sure that we show impacts, and if we're not, then we need to adjust, but for all of us, we're showing some impact there. Oh, there's another one, and then, does agriculture affects your life every day? We went from forty-six point five to eighty-four percent, and I think that was, that, to me, that's an eye-opener, that just shows that our students really don't understand probably where our food comes from, and that's part of our job.
And so, you know, the, I'm just gonna say, we've had a wonderful partnership with you all, and I thank you all so much for all your hard work to make this day happen. There is a little video in there, this video is from last year, but it's a great video just to see what happens there and and how the students interact with the the farm community. You know, it's great, and we, I'm looking forward to it already for next year, so thank you again for all your help.
Welcome, thank you.
All right.
This was the little display, the little display we had at the beginning, after the day.
I was gonna say, you guys might be having a little too much fun, but I guess that's impossible.
Don't worry, it's a lot of work.
Yeah, no, I know that's impossible, but I'm really so impressed, and I'm so so glad that you're here, because you are the drivers for this, you know, both of you that started this program, you know, put it together, and it is, it's extremely important, especially for our county, you know, in particular, but but, you know, nationwide. And so, thank you, very, very impressive, and it seems like the kids are, you know, enjoying it, and the more we can get them outdoors and learn outdoors, the better off everybody's going to be, I believe, so, so thanks. Anybody else?
No, it is, it's very impressive, and it's so important, because even if you're not, if you don't stay right here in the Eastern Shore, you can take this knowledge and send it out, because I don't think, you know, you probably are much more aware than most seventh graders and high schoolers of what goes on, because we're in an ag county, but there's a lot of people have no clue whatsoever of how we obtain food, and how, and the impact that, you know, all of this gentrification and this changing, you know, this zoning affects it, and so it's just very, very important, and I'm very impressed and proud that you guys are are following it, because it's not an easy job. I've always thought that if I can get someone to work for me who had, whose family works the land, are the best workers ever, because they know what it means to be responsible. They know that their lives are in their hands literally, and so, very impressive, so thank you for this.
We have a little gift for you. If you have any.
Is it a goat?
Don't turn your back.
Stay at your house.
He could, they could stay.
Stay at your house. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Oh, very cool.
Thank you.
All right, I'm having too much fun.
Thank you very much.
Do y'all post this event, because that would be fun as a tag along, have a couple of.
Yeah, it's on the schedule.
Thank you so much, really.
Yeah, thank you very, very much.
Really appreciate, appreciate all the hard work you make, you know, to look at feedback and tweak things here and there, because I think it makes such a difference.
And we really did, we, we sent out that post-evaluation, they said they wanted more hands-on, and that's what we did, and I think that, from what I've read from this year.
Yeah, they really, really enjoyed it.
And it's it's a team effort, it's just not Michael and I, it's a lot of us that work.
Thank you very, very much.
Thanks, Lee.
Up here, again.
All right. Okay, outdoor classroom update, Mr. Page again.
All right, it's me again. Take two. So I wanted to provide the the board with an update in terms of Gears Two, the Initiative Three, which is our outdoor exploration, and this, the purpose of this is just to provide you all with a little bit of background in terms of our timeline and our construction. This has been ongoing since two thousand and twenty-one, when we obtained the Gears Grant, which is the Governor's Emergency Educational Relief Funds. These particular funds were obtained in order to build outdoor classrooms for our students. The original proposal was to do all fourteen schools, but due to some of the constraints and some of the economics in terms of the pricing and so on, it just wasn't viable at that point. So we worked with finance, we worked with our principals and and our operations in order to figure out what would be the best option, and we came up with with switching a little bit in terms of where would we want to see these first, and then maybe try to obtain a little bit funds later on, so we chose the eight eight elementary schools. And we were able to manipulate them, or change the the way that the money was going to be allocated in order to get all eight elementary schools up and running in terms of the outdoor education, or outdoor classroom. So just a quick update from this past year, in early April, we were able to obtain the permits for our elementary schools. You know, we we were able to start work early on some of the schools that were in Churchill, Southersville, and Centerville, the the townships. We have had some, we've been having to work with Queen Anne's County permitting a little bit in order to get some of the other ones up and running a little, we had some things that we needed to provide for them additional. But so I'll show you some pictures of of those four schools that we first started with, so they're doing two waves, four schools and then four schools. But late April, we got into prepping the sites, setting the posts and the concrete, we installed the rough rough installation of the electrical, and then we have just just this past week, we poured the slabs at at Centerville Elementary School and at Kennard Elementary School, so that looks, it looks great, so things are coming along really well. In May, we're looking to get the roofs and the tables for for the construction, and then we hope to have this all wrapped up by June, and then look forward to some professional development, you know, going into August in terms of how to utilize the utilize those classrooms. So these are, these are some of the, this is the way that it's going to look, we selected, again, a twenty-two by thirty-two slab with the post, it's kind of a pavilion structure, they'll have a green metal roof for our Green Classrooms, Green Schools Initiative, they'll also have green tables, so it's a place where students can go outdoors with their teachers and learn. You know, the the big thing here is that these these rooms are not just for science, these rooms are not just for environmental literacy, these rooms are for anybody who wants to utilize them. As you indicated earlier, Mr. Schifinelli, you know, we want to get students outdoors, there's benefits for getting them outdoors in terms of fresh air, being in nature and so on, so these are strategically located around the schools so that they are in, you know, areas that are close to the schools in case we needed to move students, and they're also, we tried to pick places that are kind of all, you know, in in nature. So our hope is to deliver that professional development and give the give the teachers an opportunity to bring their students into a different setting rather than the brick-and-mortar classrooms. These, these are the pictures, and I tried to do them kind of chronologically here, so the excavation on the left-hand side, you can see them kind of clearing the area, and then they they board or or, you know, they got the auger and created the holes for the posts, and then they had to set those posts with concrete. And this, these particular images are of Southersville Elementary School. This is, this is Churchill and Southersville, so on the left-hand side, you can see where they have started to put down the the stone for the concrete and framed it out for the pathways. That's one thing I do want you all to know is that part of this was that it was all ADA compliant, so any student is going to be able to access these from from our schools so they can utilize the walkways in order to get there. That middle picture is, shows the electric there, one of the key things that we wanted to ensure was that if students did bring their Chromebooks out, or they could they could utilize them there, and that they could utilize electricity. Also, if a teacher wanted to bring a projector out or some type of way of utilizing instruction there, that she could, she or he could plug into the electric. And then finally, that that top right picture is Churchill Elementary School, and you can see the posts are there with the concrete, the concrete slab. And then what's happening now at at those areas are, they are starting to grade the grade the the sides of the the slab, so that they are smooth, and then they'll seed and and straw them. Any questions about that? So in conclusion, you know, it's, we're we're moving forward, and we'll have them done by June and ready for next year, so we're, I, we're really excited.
You'll have all eight done by June?
Excuse me?
You'll have all eight done by June?
Yes, correct.
So you've got all the permits and everything's?
So this week, we just finalized all the permits with Queen Anne's County, so they are ready to go. Rock and roll.
Great, that's good.
All right, any comments, questions, anyone else? Thank you, Mike, we appreciate everything. All right, and as you step down, we're gonna move out to action items. Queen Anne's County High School FFA overnight field trip, speaking of the FFA. Mr. Stokes.
Good evening, we are three officers from the Queen Anne's County FFA chapter. I'm Melissa Crawsley, and I'm the president.
I'm Leah Dean, and I'm the historian.
I'm Michael Carroll, I'm the vice president, second vice president.
All right, well, welcome to the board.
We are here today to ask for approval to go to our state convention in June.
So during state convention, we would be competing in public speaking for those who come, sorry, who those from who actually made it in regionals, and we'd be competing in states, which for LDEs, Leadership Development Events.
We are also having two teams compete in CDEs, which is Career Development Events, which is opportunities for students to compete in career-based competitions, and we have two teams competing, we have the turf team, and we have Ag Knowledge Team.
Oh, I have a chance to talk now. So one of the great things about us, if we, if you allow us to go to states, is that we get to meet other chapters from across across Maryland, and we also get to make new friends, and there's also team building exercises during this, there's leadership development programs that they do, they offer during the state convention, and that I believe there is a dance some time during the week that we get to meet new people, and our chapters also plan to do some team building exercises while we're out there.
Okay, any, is that it, anything else?
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
All right, and where are the dates, I'm sorry?
The days are June twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth.
Okay. All right, and I see some folks in the back taking a picture from back there, so I'm gonna get one of you guys up here, and I'm gonna send it to her later, for him, Mr. Stokes. Okay, anybody, comments?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the overnight field trip for the Queen Anne's County High School FFA to travel to the University of Maryland College Park to attend the Maryland FFA State Convention. The fiscal impact would be seventy-five hundred for the bus and a hundred and fifty per student for twenty students, and budgeted with their chapter fundraising.
All right, we have a motion in a second, any further comment? All those in favor? Thanks, guys, and and best of luck, yeah, I'm sure you're gonna have fun.
Thank you so much.
And then, that's right, after you get back in September, we want a full brief update, what happened. All right.
Thank you so much.
Okay, everybody's had a chance to review and ask questions about the Human Resources and Substitute Bus Driver Report. Here, a motion?
I, Mr. President, I move that we accept the HR report as presented.
All right, we got a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, future meetings and events, June seventh, twenty twenty-three, at six PM will be our regular open session meeting, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, and five PM will be our June work session, and anybody got anything else? Nope, okay, then can I hear a motion to adjourn open session?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, and are we gonna have?
An open, reopen, close session.
All right, an open, reopen, close session, we got a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, good evening, everybody.